Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. My name is Don Swiker, and I'm going to call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left is Mike Stinas, to my right is Nan Feigl, Bjorn from IT, Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann over behind the wall, and we got Brittany from the press. And first up today is visitors and citizens. Do we have anybody online or in the gallery that would like to address the board today that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the first thing, and that's the public hearing for proposed zoning ordinance three nineteen. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And with us, we have Laura from ECIA and Becca from the zoning office, and they're going to give us the synopsis of the zoning ordinance and any feedback you might have received. For yours.
All right, we'll wait for the PowerPoint to come up. So as you said, this is a public hearing for the update of the entire Jackson County zoning ordinance. Can go to the next slide. So the applicant is the zoning, the Jackson County Zoning Department. So this is a text amendment, which usually would just amend a part of an ordinance, but in this case, it's your request was the entire ordinance. And these were the things that we were working toward, to make it compatible with the county's vision, goals, and objectives, make it compatible with Iowa code and Iowa administrative code. And we did this through research input from county staff, the zoning commission, the Board of Adjustment, Jackson County residents, and other interested parties. We thank all of them for their help. We also thank the zoning commission, who held monthly work sessions from January through August, held a public hearing on October twentieth, and is recommending approval of the proposed update. The full text of this update is available and has been available throughout the process on the Jackson County Zoning Department and so at the Jackson County Zoning Department, and then also on the department's website with the link that you see there. It is a hundred and forty page document, so we encouraged online viewing. Just to recap, the purpose and application of the zoning ordinance is to have orderly land use patterns, and in the case of Jackson County, to protect agriculture. The ordinance divides the unincorporated area of the county into districts. These talk about how property can be used. Compatible uses are separated from incompatible uses. The districts also have regulations on building height and size, setbacks or distances that buildings should be from lot lines. And they also regulate all street parking and signs. Iowa code exempts farmland, farmhouses, and farm buildings unless they're located in a regulated floodplain of a river or creek. And typically, an ordinance has two parts, a text and the official zoning map. Next slide. The reasons that we're looking at updating your current ordinance is it's pretty loosely organized, it's difficult to understand, we found inconsistencies, we found gaps. The tables are confusing at best and unreadable at worst. There are no illustrations. One of the big issues was it doesn't accommodate subdivisions that were planted before the resoning. And there are some conflicts with Iowa code, which has changed over time. So our goals were, we would like this to be user-friendly, better organized, address concerns that people have with uses and regulations, add tables, illustrations, definitions, and create regulations for those older subdivisions and reference Iowa code. To do this, the zoning commission first reaffirmed the county goals and objectives and the vision. And we also worked carefully throughout this process by examining the land use policy. The major goals for this policy are to enhance life for our residents, utilize and conserve our resources and our land, provide a desirable level of facilities and services, and also to encourage development to be compact near cities and major roadways. We also looked at your recent comprehensive plan. In the land use chapter, there are goals about keeping that land use policy current, using best practices, coordinating with the cities, preserving and protecting land that's usable for agriculture and preserving open spaces and cultural resources. So we started with a new table of contents, and that's lined out for you here. We had three chapters, general provisions, administration, and definitions. And zoning district regulation. So we reorganized it. The general provisions in chapter one were moved from the end to the beginning. And generally, what these do in an ordinance of this type is they discuss the relationship to various sections of the Iowa code, county zoning, Public Meetings Act, public records. And they also talk about the official zoning map. So really, it sets the tone for the overall purpose of forming of the ordinance. We also are now referencing Jackson County Code of Ordinances and Iowa codes. The reason we're doing that is if those codes get amended in the future, your ordinance doesn't have to be amended because by reference, it includes the current Iowa code or Jackson County code and any future amendments. This is the official zoning map that's described in the ordinance. And that's maintained by the zoning department with assistance from the GIS department. Chapter two has been extensively revised. Section two point one was about two sentences, and it is now twenty pages. The idea here was I worked with Lori and Becca as the zoning administrators to set up a step-by-step review process for the zoning inquiries that they receive, but also for anyone who may be assisting an applicant. And this helps us have consistent interpretation. We have a review process that we understand. This also attempts to explain the whole scope and content of our development regulations. And in doing so, we are providing text that helps explain things, tables that helps with visual, visually understanding of things, and illustrations for things involving how to measure a setback and that type of thing. This table is an example. This is really just, it's at the beginning, and it's very simply telling you what are the types of land uses, what are some examples, what are some examples of structures, and just really starting out with basics and then moving forward in more and more detail. So things that were added were general use categories for flexibility. This is a very common thing that's being done with zoning ordinances. It allows your ordinance to be more flexible as uses change over time. We also are recommending that the word special exceptions be changed to conditional use permits throughout the ordinance. This is a more common practice and really reflects that these uses and structure are exceptions. They're conditional. There are uses that are allowed with some conditions. We also created a lot of matrices of uses and structures organized by zoning district. They're organized to describe their parking regulations. And this provides a way to quickly find a use in a district or a district and what it allows. And so that makes conversation between the administrator and the applicant much easier. Some other new things that we wanted to emphasize is we moved parking and development regulations into one place. And we were also discussing flag lots. We realized there wasn't any information about them, so we added those in. And we also added consistency with the Iowa code. This diagram here showing how to measure setbacks on a standard lot, which would be what you think of it automatically as a nice, neat rectangle or a irregular lot, which we also see depending around the full set. This type of information, you can write all the text you want, but the illustration provides a means for the applicant, the administrator, the zoning commission, or Board of Adjustment to understand what are these terms meaning and how are we, what are we doing, what are we measuring for setbacks? We have the same zoning districts that you currently have, but we've organized them a little bit differently. And the template you see here is what we're using. Pretty much the same, except we've created a new section for temporary uses. I'll talk about that in a little bit. Go to the next slide, please.
Was there an M two before? No?
Yes. I mentioned that new land use categories are something that other communities are looking at, other counties are looking at, and this is the list of ones we came up with. So they enable your ordinance to be consistent with Iowa code. Many of these haven't have a relationship to Iowa code or administrative code definition. They also mean that as things change over time, your ordinance remains current and flexible. We also created some new specific uses, a couple of these related to daycare and related to solar energy at the consumer scale or part of your comprehensive plan. Goals, but the others we have are ones that responded to questions about various uses that exist in the county, such as logging, but weren't defined, or event venue, which was something that was coming up in different formats. And so creating a definition for that was another way to be more flexible. For all of the zoning ordinances, we have these common updates. They all refer to your land use policy. They all refer to county and Iowa code citations. The tables are set up to direct the user to other regulations that are found in the ordinance. Conditional uses and structures replace special exceptions, as I mentioned. Mentioned temporary uses and structures was a new section in the districts. This is a set of uses that required zoning Board of Adjustment approval. As we now have recommended, let the zoning administrator decide approve these. It's easier, removes cases from the board's agenda, and helps the process move forward. Development, whoops, sorry, I got a lot on this slide I gotta go over. Thank you. Development regulations, we want to thank the county health department, the county engineer. They worked with us on a lot of these regulations. The two bullets here are ones that they recommended we add, and those show up in every district. We also consolidated the regulations for parking signs and conditional uses into other sections. And then the A one and R one residential districts now have a set of alternative regulations for older subdivisions created before we had zoning. We also have a current section of supplemental regulations, and we expanded this. We continue to have things like the visibility at intersections, only now we refer to how does the county engineer's office define that? So we work with our departments to kind of reference things they already had in hand. We also have a new burial site protection. This creates a screening process for the county's policy adopted in nineteen ninety nine, refers applicants to the office of the state archaeologist, does need it, and we want to thank that office for helping Becca come up with a screening process that helps applicants be aware of not only what the law is, but what they need to do and who to talk to about it. We also did two updates related to Iowa code. One is a new two thousand twenty five amendment to allow accessory dwelling units. And we've completed that in compliance with the code. And also, we updated the home occupation section to comply with Iowa code for home-based businesses. Fences had one line in R one with no guidance. So Becca gets questions about this, and so we created a section that provides guidance. It does ask for a permit, but there's no fee. We have illustrations, we create waivers. And so this brings up cases that might otherwise be going to the Board of Adjustment. Becca's able to work with the property owners, particularly residential property owners, on getting their fences up in compliance. This, this is just a little bit more information on that burial site protection. This deals with ancient burials, but also covers cemeteries. There's sections in the Iowa code that pertain, and basically, the screening process in the green box is the new process that Becca's recommending. It identifies specific permits and other items for approval, like resignings and subdivisions, which are in that nineteen ninety nine resolution. But we also talk about she gets a lot of applicants. This may be their only time to come into the zoning department, and a lot of these things are new. And so this is, she also has this ability to work hands-on with them and help them through this process. And basically, what we're doing is helping the developer or the applicant be in compliance with these state codes and talk to the people who can help them figure out, do they have warrants on their property, and if so, what does that mean? We also have a current section two point nine. It's pretty short. It has some key information in it, but we updated it by putting all the sign regulations here, moving the conditional uses and structures here, and there were special requirements in each district that were combined, so there wasn't repetition. One thing we do want to point out is, in addition to more definitions, illustrations, and tables, the zoning commission is recommending that the sign area be increased from one hundred square feet to two hundred square feet in commercial and industrial districts. It reflects what is currently existing, and so it makes fewer of our signs non-conforming, and it gives a little more flexibility for the zoning administrator signs like this sign are replaced along the highway or in an industrial district.
You talking about the square footage of the sign itself or the?
The sign, the sign area. So in this, this diagram, the sign area is the blue and white sign, and we'll sign in the two signs for the price of diesel and regular. We also had a section two ten for nonconformities. This is the grandfather section of lots, uses, and structures. We wanted to make clear that we had zoning since nineteen seventy six because we have a link to that with alternative regulations in agricultural and residential districts. But we really wanted to also make this section, which can be challenging to understand and interpret, have more explanation, more consistent regulations, and to provide for a lot of ways to keep a grandfather property lot or use in place, like repairs, alterations, reconstruction, conversion, and so forth. Can go to the next one. Chapter three for administration has been updated to really provide for greater coordination, more emphasis on a pre-application review or conference so that the zoning administrator, working often with the county health and county engineering departments, is able to bring in that interdepartmental and then sometimes interagency coordination right at the start, before things get going too far, before money is spent and things are built, so that delays and higher costs for applicants can be avoided. We also created an administrative waiver. This is a procedure that allows the zoning administrator to modify setback requirements that meets certain criteria that have written agreement toward the neighbors. This removes these cases from the Board of Adjustment, and it fosters people to make those property improvements. We use this process very successfully in Dubuque, and I see that it can really help with many of the projects that are coming in, particularly for home improvement projects. Also mentioned that we created this ability for the zoning administrator to approve temporary uses and structures. That's added to the administration enforcement chapter. Chapter four is new. The Board of Adjustment is in the current ordinance, but we put it in its own chapter. And this chapter really relates to the section of the Iowa code that describes the duties and responsibilities of the Board of Adjustment. The updates were basically, again, special exceptions becoming conditional use permits. There was an Iowa code amendment for dimensional variance passed in twenty twenty five, so we've added that. And then, based on her extensive experience of one month as a zoning administrator, said we need an extension of conditional use permit process because there isn't one. And so she, she worked with her colleagues and did some research and came up with a process where if it's a conditional use, and it's going to be a big change, we'd better do a public hearing with the Board of Adjustment. But if it's not, if it's just maybe they had some supply chain delays, maybe that can be done by the zoning administrator providing an extension. Next slide. The zoning commission is mentioned in your current ordinance, but it actually has some duties under the Iowa code for county zoning that weren't mentioned. So we gave it a chapter as well. So chapter five talks about those powers and duties under Iowa code. It provides an update of the commission's responsibility, updates the procedures that are allowed under Iowa code. Chapter six is definitions. The definitions in the ordinance were very limited. Inevitably, you'd go to look for one, and it wasn't there. One of them is in there twice. So there were just these little things that we really thought we could improve. And so what we've done is we have over two hundred definitions. Many of them reference Iowa code, Iowa administrative code, which means they stay current. And then you see, just some other things that we did, like illustrations and moving definitions into the definitions section. Or moving regulation out of the definitions section, that type of thing. We could go to the next one. We're done. Don, happy to answer any questions to talk about the process looked at us here and the process going forward. Whatever you wish.
Any questions for Laura or Becca?
Yeah, no, I honestly, I really appreciate the work that the board has put in and you guys have put in, and I think it makes it much easier to define, and people can actually look and understand what's happening here. You have a definite set of rules. I know in one section there, you mentioned solar and wind. Do we consider or is like data mining included? I know it's up and coming. We talked about it yesterday at a meeting. I believe Cascade is.
Cascade's working on an ordinance, yes.
I'm sure they think they have a planned center in their industrial park, as a matter of fact.
Yes, that's my understanding, too.
So I don't know if that needs to be addressed. I know it's something that we've talked about, and we don't have a handle on it, basically.
So this ordinance just has a placeholder. It uses the words data center because there was an Iowa code definition for data center that applies to many of these types of uses like Cascade is looking at. And so it's a placeholder. And so has Becca and the zoning commission worked through whatever that ordinance might look like for you? We go back in and use that, those reference points that are already set up to match whatever is adopted.
I appreciate it, Becca, that we can, you know, go back and change things in the references to the code, and that makes it just like a whole lot simpler that they can go and spend the time. It takes a little bit to read a hundred and forty pages, but if you go to a section that pertains to you and it's explained, and you get a diagram, I can measure from point A to point B, like you say. Well, they used to say twenty feet from the middle or whatever. Well, what's the front yard? What's the side yard?
Yeah, and so yards and setbacks are extremely confusing.
Yeah.
It's even my eyes cross trying to explain them to people. So I recommend it in the commission, and the administrators agree that they are confusing. They we can talk about setbacks because those are so much easier. And so we're right there with you. We want to make this as simple and understanding as possible. What we would find is we have, in our current ordinance, we have this kind of cliff effect, and it says, oh, the usual this. What do you mean the usual? Where is it? There's no regulation. How do we measure it? So we really tried hard to catch those cases that were coming up throughout the year helped us. So that is, that means it's longer. But most of the time, it means Becca can now explain it to someone.
Yeah.
There's, and sometimes there is a drawing or a diagram or a table that helps with that, and that is back to that intent of making it more user-friendly, being consistent, and really being the.
Up to date.
And up to date, yes.
Very much. I like the referencing the codes. You don't lose, oh, we forgot to go back and change that. You know, it's automatically changed when the code changes.
Yes, that is, that was a huge, 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 short. It would have been a lot longer if we had added all those references.
That'd a million pages.
Yeah, it would have been probably doubled, yeah.
Yeah.
The other question that I noticed was the administrative waiver, which I like, which takes a lot of time and confusion out of the commission or whatever it may be. I still see maybe a gray area in there. This is all right. The administrator made that decision, but and I guess then you have the appeal process coming.
We do. And so the way that the process works is if the surrounding property are signed an agreement, and it's coordinated by the zoning administrator, we want to avoid intimidation or miscommunication or misinterpretation. So there's a consistent third party administering this to the zoning administrator. And if that agreement can't be reached, there is the Board of Adjustment process or other types of actions that can be taken.
The procedure laid out, this is what's going to happen, yeah.
We, as I mentioned, with the city of Dubuque, we use this, and we dropped a significant number of cases from our Board of Adjustment that were, that were very easy to get through that small group process of what do your neighbors think? They're okay with it. It's within the prescribed limitations. The waivers are not carte blanche. They have set a criteria. But it kept those from going to a public hearing. So I'm really happy we're able to get, we can offer that.
Oh, I like it. The only other thing, being in the real estate industry for thirty-five years, I can't always tell people now they comply for a special exception again. It's conditional use. I gotta change my verbiage.
Yes, it does. And we trip a little bit ourselves, but we really feel that the name of, as a conditional use, implies that it's something that's allowed with conditions and through a hearing process that involves neighbors before abiding the Board of Adjustment as opposed to a special exception. So that's why a lot of communities and counties are moving towards that. It's really more reflective of what the process is. And we've really tried to also make it as clear as possible, which is, which is difficult with poor language, but offer something that the administrator can explain. I mean, we had attorneys calling who couldn't understand the ordinance, and they said, this is why we need any ordinance. And the attorneys who are used to using their language are having difficulty. Regular folks, near mortals.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was difficult. There is no doubt about it. I mean, there were too many gray areas, you know.
Yes, yes.
I have not received any responses. I mean, zero responses, and I think it's all a good thing that, you know, we didn't have complaints and I think it might make it user-friendly and appreciated.
I just appreciate what the zoning board is doing with the wind and now tackling this, and then they got solar, they got battery storage, they got data mining still coming down the pipe, but they've been they've been earning their stuff. So it's appreciated what they're doing. So any other questions or concerns or?
How long have you guys been on this now?
Well, this has been about a year, a little less than.
We started in December, the first zoning commission meeting was in December, and then they began their their work, their review work in January.
So they spent prior year on the wind ordinance, you know?
Year and a half.
A year and a half. They had a few big events and.
They're well seasoned.
They probably ain't getting paid enough, like you said.
All right, if there are any other comments, questions, concerns?
Then I'd make a motion and close the public hearing.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by an end to close the public hearing for the proposed zoning ordinance three nineteen. Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to uh, close the public hearing for the proposed zoning ordinance three nineteen. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most opposed, motion carries. Next is, do we want to take action of those ordinance three nineteen?
Uh, yeah, actually I would make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance department um, as presented and waive the second.
You gotta do that separately.
Yeah. I would also like you to repeal previous ordinances.
Okay.
So this motion would be to repeal the previous ordinance and approve the new draft of zoning ordinance three nineteen.
Okay, more than that, that's what I thought I said.
I thought I heard.
I tried to say that.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Mike to pre- repeal previous um, ordinance, or ordinance, previous versions of ordinance three nineteen and approve the new reading of the new ordinance three nineteen as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries now.
I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Second and third.
Can we do them together?
Yes.
What I would do, if I were you, I would suspend Robert's Rules of Orders.
Yeah.
To proceed with the second and third reading.
Okay, I will do, do that. I will suspend Robert's Rules of Orders to sus- to waive the second and third reading of ordinance three nineteen.
I would second.
We got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to suspend Robert's Rules of Orders and proceed with the second and third reading. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance three nineteen.
I would second.
Got a motion by Mike, or Nen, second by Mike to approve the second reading of ordinance number three nineteen. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Now we need a third and final reading.
I'll make a motion to spend the.
No, no, just motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance three nineteen.
I presented, uh, yeah, I'm in second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the third and final reading of ordinance three nineteen, the zoning ordinance as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So it is, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your support.
Due diligence and all that stuff, and we look forward to the next things coming.
I really appreciate the time and effort that was put into it. Uh, you know, it eliminates a lot of aggravation, if you want to call it that.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll kind of start a bunch of new aggravation.
A little stress, a little, whatever, all of them.
All right. Got the list on to another.
And thank you to Brian Venemo and our zoning commissioners for bringing us online. And thank you to Laura and all of her work. And thank you.
Thank you much.
Thanks everybody. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
The next up, we have Lucinda from the Senior Center. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm ready here.
Hey Kathy, how you doing?
All right. I'd like to address all of you and thank you for giving me your time to listen to our new opportunity at Senior Center. I did a proposal two weeks ago. Did a presentation in front of sixty-two people on how I wanted them to open their wallets and possibly give us a donation for next year to help with our renovation project. The next day, I got a phone call from an anonymous donor who said they wanted to provide half the price for a new stove in the Senior Center. Took my breath away. I wasn't expecting that. I was just trying, trying to do a fundraiser for the Senior Center. That's what I was trying to do. Um, with that, and when I came to present to you initially in a open forum, I learned I should do licensing and I should check on insurance, which I've done all of that. And we are approved and we can legally serve food there once every, uh, once every week, one time every week to the public with the resources I have now. But I also know that we have a stove there that's been in the property for quite a while. It does not work. We don't know why it doesn't work. We don't know the history on that gas stove, which is a Vulcan. But the my donor has a situation where they would like me to proceed on this immediately because they have health issues. So I'm here to ask you, what would you like me to do with this opportunity?
Um, we have been talking with Jeff Kilburg quite a bit about this and I'm trying to pull that email up that he sent. Um, he kind of went down and he looked at the stove that's currently there. And he went out and he kind of priced some different stoves to kind of see um, what's going on. And he said the stove that says a Vulcan, which is one of the top of the line commercial stoves. And he talked to Star Restaurant Equipment. And they talked to him and they said they would like to come down and look at it and they thought it might be a three to five hundred dollar fix.
Okay.
And to us, he's, he gave us, he goes, Star Equipment could come fix it. You could get a, he had a price for a plain jane, a manna five, the cubic foot stove. He had a KitchenAid commercial style. He had a whirlpool stainless steel. He had a kitchen aid commercial style stainless steel. Prices went up to almost eight thousand dollars. And before we buy a new stove, and I appreciate the donor, um.
I do too.
But a new stove probably won't fit in that hole. And if we could look at maybe trying to fix this, I, well, we, I think with these, uh, NEI three A, the reason it just got shut off is they didn't want to use it. And they were kind of doing the microwave meals and stuff, so it just kind of got mothballed, so to speak. There was a talk maybe of a little bit of a leak, but could we at least have Star come in and look at it? And if it's a recoupable, easy thing, that would be the biggest, for me anyway, that'd be the biggest bang for the buck.
Sure.
Is if we could have a top of the brand, top of the line, commercial stove, fully functional, that fits in the space, you know?
So we kind of went over all the options that were presented to us and we had discussion with maintenance, of course, and, and what would be the best option. And he also thought the best option was, you know, obviously let them come in and th- this is a good unit. I mean, and we talked about the pilot light thing and he said it was so minimal, if the pilot light would go out, then it's not, you know, it's not a really a concern to the insurance company and whatnot. So, um, I guess like Don said, with, with the aspect, this is built in and it's there. And to renovate with a new stove, with a common household stove, might not be the best option. So I guess we'd like to try to, and according to Star Equipment, their observation of it, normal wear and tear, it, it just needs to be cleaned and it needs to be, you know, an overhaul if you.
If we could look at that first and if that works, great. If not, if thinking of this, like, you know what, this is.
But on the exciting part of it, I literally in October had every room full in that Senior Center.
That's awesome.
Doing something.
Yeah.
And I had over forty-five, fifty people in there to feed. And it was exciting and it was thrilling. And our count last month in October was five hundred and four people that used the center.
Nice.
So we are moving.
You guys are doing great.
That is awesome.
Every month when I come to your meeting, those numbers are going up. And I'd love to see that.
Yeah.
My question for the donor, um, when I look at this, the cheapest stove is six ninety-nine that he found, the plain jane, a manna, a five cubic foot.
No, she was.
The commercial one was seventy-nine, forty-nine, so.
It was, she was ready to do several thousand hours.
Okay.
And she even showed up the next day with a check in her hand.
If she wants to help pay for the, to see if we can restore this, it'll be great. But I think that would be the smartest thing. If we could, um, if you guys are okay with us at least investigating to see if we can salvage the one that's there.
See what they think.
Yeah.
See what, yeah.
Because I hate to give.
Ask for advice, you know?
I know, yeah, exactly.
Hey, get a room on the top of the line if it's a matter of cleaning some orifices and.
Mm-hmm. And I know some of you question what my sewing ladies do, but my sewing ladies, they make quilts of valor and they make quilts for the homeless and they make baby caps and they can even make you a wallet if you want. I want to, I wanted to.
So you're very.
We have sewing machines there in my group that I told you about initially.
They made that?
They made this. And they even put my horse's face on the front of it.
This is, this is like a demo I could give this for a Christmas present, you know, I'd be.
Because of her horse's face on the front of it.
Shelley, Shelley Beck made this. And I'll tell you, she has talent, lore.
Get the other side.
All of our seniors, our senior ladies love that facility and as my witness here, they are there at eight o'clock in the morning every week. We have to tell them to stay away when it gets nasty weather. They, this is, they look forward to this.
The biggest thing that we see, especially in my, now about three years, same as Nen, is activity down there has just exploded. And that's the biggest thing we wanted to see. It was kind of, I wouldn't say dying on the vine, but just, it, it was an unrealized resource.
It was just so hard to come out of the COVID area thing. The era was just horrible. And it just discouraged everybody. I'm not going, I'm not getting sick, I'm not, and it was hard to get them back, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And so to see the, the activity and stuff, that's why we're still trying to pursue the CDVG grant, you know, we're just waiting for, you know, for next year's rounds. We're still talking and, and our, our, our IPs for the architect to kind of draw up the necessary plans and stuff we need, so.
The biggest concern my board has is if I go out there and I get donations, do I always need to keep track of where to send those donations back if we do not get that grant?
Well, I have talked to the city.
Okay.
They offered their, their, if I remember right, if I, if I'm misquoting, I apologize. But they committed to the CDVG. We needed their participation as well. In the event, I asked them, in the event that we don't get this grant, are you guys still on board for that amount? So we could, it would just, the grant would, not getting the grant would just change the scale of our development, but we're still using our money and their money to do something, so.
So we're still gonna.
Yeah, we're still changing the scale. The grant changes the scale.
The grant, yeah, makes it more large scheme. You know, otherwise it may be scaled down to the painting and the wall or whatever. You guys.
We prioritize, we need to start, we need to go and go what our vision is in the future, yeah.
Right. Now, I thought we were going to have to go through a health inspection, so I really took Kathy Cundy and made her help me. It made me. It is clean. It is clean.
We've done a lot of going through, throwing out, cleaning. We're ready.
Even the sheds I've been cleaning, so.
We sure appreciate it.
We appreciate, and so if we could, I think at this point, we just got to give Jeff the go ahead, uh, maybe have them come in and take a look at this.
There.
And, and Jeff has had a conversation with you people, correct? I mean, you, you, you understand pages, Jeff, most of the time, yeah.
We are.
No, he does a great job for us.
He does a great job for us. He's excellent, yes.
I, I would also, uh, maybe express to your donor, if this goes by, that there will be other needs as they want to. Need to check blank out, we might, there's going to be other needs.
She's watching right now. I'm sure she is. It's like my angel on my shoulder here. Um, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my questions.
No, and, and again, we appreciate everything you guys are doing and that's why we support it and we're trying to encourage it. And, and, and see, because again, as it grows, that's what it's there for. I mean, um.
And we'll do an outstanding Christmas party on December twelfth and I want you to come for lunch.
Okay.
What's the December twelfth?
It's on a Friday.
It's on a Friday.
Okay, yeah.
Eleven, we'll eat eleven thirty.
And Geronimo, your catering.
Ooh, start the weekend early, you know?
So please, so.
No, we, generosity from your donor and, and again, that, that's a great thing. And I think what other uh, positive added or contribution we had is the city is involved too. So county, city, both working together here to make this a better deal, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah, they have a Facebook page and that's updating that.
And I had asked you about an antenna, but I got that resolved because we now have a fire stick. It's all up and running, so.
There you go.
They're laying all over the place.
Thank you so much, yes.
Thank you very much.
Her sewing women wanted to watch the sporting English. They left to go watch.
So they're going to be asking for drinks. I'm gonna validate you later.
Next up, we have Kyle Bales and Michael Stone from the Emergency Medical Services Coordinator. What's going on?
Morning.
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 Online.
Yeah, I got Kyle online, so I'll let him kick it off here.
Yeah, sorry I couldn't be there in person, but Mike's there to fill in all the large gaps that I have in my knowledge on this, so, um, I guess, um, can I share a presentate, I think we had a presentation that Mike sent and a letter, um, that I sent over for, um, EMS Essential Services. Um, so, what's that?
I just went to you, you were having questions, so. Um, it just, he just detailed out the code, it broke it down. So, nothing more that's in the letter, really.
Yeah, so, so basically, um, this is like the first of the three steps to bring this up to you guys to see about getting the essential services added as a bond vote. Um, right now EMS in Jackson County isn't an essential service. They don't receive, a lot, a lot of them don't receive tax money. And as everybody knows, prices of everything keeps going up and the insurance isn't, payments really aren't keeping up. And, um, you know, some of the non-transports don't get paid at all. Um, so with the addition of radios coming up and any of those, uh, cardiac monitors, um, any of the equipment that we need, um, for some of that, uh, is starting to put a large burden on our agencies. So we wanted to start this process. We know it's going to be a long one. Um, but the first step was to come talk to you guys about it. Um, so, one thing that, I mean, you're, you know, the procedure's more than I do, but just as a summary, um, of the process, I guess of the, of the essential service procedure, uh, we have to bring it to you guys for three readings, um, before it can be added as the bond vote. Um, we need to establish an advisory council. Um, that's something that we've been discussing as a small, uh, group from the EMS Association. Uh, just kind of where we're going to go with that. Um, and then once that advisory council gets established, uh, we would use them to determine kind of what we need as far as, um, the amount on the bond vote. Uh, it can go up to seventy-five cents per one thousand of assessed value, but um, we want to take a deep dive into everybody's services, kind of see what everybody's looking for, what we might need. Um, and, and go for, um, something a little bit more palpable, palpable to some of the taxpayers. Um, it's also a tax for fifteen years if it goes, if it would go through. Um, and the advisory council would be, well, I, I mean, depending on how it's set up, the advisory council could be the one that distributes funds, um, to EMS services. Um, when, when funds would come in. Um, and if approved at election, uh, there will be an annual assessment and review and, um, there'd be public comment, uh, for any of the, the funds that have been used or anything like that. Um, eligible costs are, uh, just examples, those cardiac monitors, defibrillators, any non-disposable essential ambulance equipment, uh, communications such as pagers and radios, um, training for the use of equipment, vehicles, automotive parts, building and land and wages and salary are all included that could be used, um. And that, that'd be up to each service to be able to determine kind of where, where they need help, uh, with funding. And we're projecting to try to have this on the November third, two thousand and twenty-six vote. Um, the, a lot of the services within the association have demonstrated that they're really struggling to be able to keep up with those, um, medical calls and, and we get far more medical calls in our, in our areas than we do other emergency calls. I would like fires, um, and some of those non-transport services really having a hard time keeping up with, uh, being able to respond to those. So I think that this might be a good way to start, uh, helping with that, um, and really look forward to hearing your thoughts and see what kind of ideas we can come up with, I guess.
Well, Kyle, we've talked a few times in the past. Well, Kyle, we've talked a few times in the past, and I guess my big concern when it's more of a. Uh governance and auditory perspective is. It's for me to fully support something like this, because again, it always seems like the taxpayers have to carry a bulk of the burden of about any change. I would expect to see a standard, a minimum for each service, because. If you look at the different services who are out there, you know, the 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 transport service in Macocota looks different than Bellevue, looks different than Springbrook, looks different than Baldwin. I I don't want to see tax money going towards, you know, individual personal. Preferences of a of a of a singular unit, you know, it's a standard. Everybody has a minimum standard. They must. Supply these things, so all the rigs are kind of the same, you know, it isn't kind of for personal preference kind of material. Uh supplies where I like this version versus that version. Well, it's more expen- you know. I I would like to see a a standard. This is, you say defibrillators, this is the standard we you you know. You know, because when you look at the figuulators, one can cost fifteen hundred bucks, one can cost fifteen thousand bucks. You know, and it just, I I want to see an even playing field kind of thing where there's minimum standards. Versus just personal nuances of each rig and how it's set up. Um, because I think that would be the fairest distribution, you know, um.
And I don't know if I could, you know, I can't tell. Or we can't tell a service like how to operate because they're all individual, but the advisory council that set up can set those parameters, let's say. If you want this money, you gotta.
Yeah, if you want assistance with supplies, this is what the county supply chain is.
Right.
We're supplying. Eye gels versus this, or we're supplying Kings versus.
Right, and and we are pretty good. We all kind of, you know, we're all in the life pack there, you know, the monitors, and we try to do some of the same stuff. Um, together, but uh it would really be on that advisory council um to set up those minimum standards to get the money.
And I guess I would defer to the auditor. How do you, if we're collecting tax dollars to kind of. Hold for an entity to spend by other entities, how do you track that? So that how does it need to be tracked?
The money goes into a trust into the county.
Yeah.
And then that is what.
I'm talking auditory passing audit.
Through through the auditor, right? Yeah, and the auditor is involved in this. And then the advisory council every year sent has to send out a bylaw report to you guys. How, what money came in, where it went to, um, you know, just kind of a recap on there, and if it isn't spent. In that year, there's carryover on it, so it's not like you gotta spend it all on.
What are you guys hearing from the state level? Uh, I know, I think in years past, they have passed uh that it could be. A position, but that's never funded, of course. They'd say, yeah, it's essential service, but you're on your own. Uh, what are you hearing? Something coming down the pipe? I know there's. Other counties that have passed uh essential services. How do they levy? And like like Don said, I'd like to see some kind of structure, some kind of protocol to say, this is how this work. This is this is.
And and we have been.
We're not event re-inviting the wheel here, but I know other counties have it.
Right, and I've reached out to uh various counties. Jones County, for example, was one of the first ones that went, and they sent me all their documents on. They have a formula that how it breaks down based on call volume, population served, how, okay, you you're gonna get this percentage or you're eligible for this percentage. My rough research, because I had to go out and look at the bond votes, roughly about twenty five counties have passed it since it began.
Them passing it. Different things, you know. I mean, I understand your side of it, you guys all side of it to say that. You know, it's hard for us to operate by selling pancakes uh every, you know, couple Sundays a year, but. You know, how do they levy? How do they fund? How that, you know, what what's it based on?
Yep, and then some of them ha- have the complete seven uh seventy five cents, you know, some went and. Only Butler County only went fourteen cents. So they met, they they said, what are our needs? What are our funds? I don't need a tax of seventy five cents because that's above and beyond what we're looking for. They went uh. Smaller. I have ones that went thirty cents, you know, this is, that's what that advisory committee would figure out these details.
Is this just for volunteer services? Or is would it, yeah, I guess I looked at, does the hospital ambulance fall into? Part of this, can they come back and say, I want you to help pay for a staff member, we want you to pay for things, because. General public's gonna say the hospital makes a bunch of money. They don't need it. So is this just for volunteer services to kind of help get through? Or is this all the ambulance services?
They they are held now if the, you know, advisory council wants to restrict down. That's again, that's up to the advisory council, um which obviously you guys are gonna be a part of or have representation. So um by law, they are eligible.
I I I can see, I can see the point. I really can with the volunteers and all this, you know, and and years past, it's harder to get more volunteers. And um once you s- once you do this, so you you start the ball rolling, if it's a snowball effect. To say, yeah, now this department has a levy, now every department we have one's a levy for this or that. We certainly need essential services. We certainly need you people and the volunteers that we have, and you can't say enough about them, but. You know, again, it's one of these processes that once you start this, then other departments and, you know, whatever they may be.
Well, police and fire are already getting taxed, right? Money.
You are you talking police in certain municipalities? Are you talking law enforcement? Are you talking, you know?
Yes, municipality, so like, right, fire department has tax, right?
Yeah.
And that's basically what this is allowing. It's allowing uh um EMS services that traditionally haven't had.
So I assume that yeah, like fire and whatnot is in each municipality's budget. Different than what the county.
Each township, you know, the 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 township trustees, they there's a fire tax that they gotta pay. I I get it. I just want to make sure that if we proceed down this route. It's uh not that there's ever a great year to do it, um there there isn't, but this year ain't. You know, when we're talking dispatch, keeps ringing up about transferring. Um, we had a meeting with all the the most of the towns. Uh municipalities in the county, and they want the county to take over dispatch um. That that, that's a big nasty thing coming, you know, down the pipe at some point possibly, so.
And that's one where, you know, uh communications is in on that too, and maybe. We can kind of alleviate some of those.
You guys don't get radios and stuff from the nine one one board? Ambulance?
Yeah, the ambulances uh each received, I think, one, one for each rig.
They did the base radios, not what the volunteers would use for pagers.
They did mobile, not portable, yeah.
So wh- what is the ask here? Actually, what is the actual ask right here?
So what we just want is to get the ball rolling, so we can't. Uh, look to schedule, um basically. We need three three readings, just like you guys did with the zone, right? At at a resolution to click, just simply declaring. We s- we s- say EMS is a central service.
Okay.
Be- before I can, um so go ahead, go ahead.
And then it'll go to the vote of the public, correct?
Well, then it would, we would establish an advisory committee. We would determine exactly what our needs are. What percentage we want to propose for the vote, and then we would set the date and go vote there.
I guess I would like to see. What the actual proposal they ask, you know, we need to see something where. The verbiage of what it needs to read, because when you're going before a vote of the beef, you know, for taxes and stuff, there's specific verbiage that needs. It needs to read certain ways, kind of like you can't just petition. Just say, I want this put on a on a on a ballot. There's specific verbiage, the way things have to be written for it to be legally applied to.
We can't do that unless we say proceed.
I'm okay. I would just like to see.
And yeah, so I can, I yeah, I mean, I can go back and look at other counties, but on their, you know, word for it, I have um. Copies of a resolution that another county utilized to pass declaring essential service on it, um.
So I just want to make it clear to the public, we are, if we decide, yeah, go ahead and pursue. Uh, a a central servicing, we're not, we're not implementing the essential service.
No.
Or levying anything. We're not doing anything on the.
Basically, I'm allowing.
Saying to go ahead and proceed with the idea.
If it requires three reading, is three readings, it's an ordinance, a resolution requires one.
What, it's some bad words, but I might have had that one too.
So, three, if it requires three readings for us to pass to be put on the ballot, that's a resolution.
Well, it's just. It's just declaring essential services, not saying to put it on the ballot at that point.
Well, that would, if it needs three, that's, there's some verbiage, some questions we need answered.
You guys have.
To declare it an essential service, if that has to be done in three readings, that's an ordinance.
Okay.
So we have to draft what that ordinance would look like, things like that, before we can declare it an essential service. And then we can proceed from there, so.
Okay.
There's some things that we need to look at and and not trying to kind of bog this system down, but. There's legal ways and legal ease that has to be hoops that have to be jumped through to do it right, so.
And the first thing that uh we do need uh published sixty day notice prior to that first reading.
Okay.
So, um, you know, we have some time to get you all that stuff prior to the first reading, if we, if you guys, you know, want to push with. Put the published out and whatever two papers I, you know, I'm sure it's whatever your normal resolutions is. So, um. Now look back into the code and make sure that we're we're following everything.
Right. Get with Lisa.
So, do you need action today on something?
I don't know.
Basically, basically, uh. For what we want is for you guys to set a date to. Do like a first reading or consider a first reading, because that will get, that will start a sixty day, right? We can get the notice in the paper.
Well, the first thing we would need to do is have a public hearing. Yeah, but we we need the ordinance.
Sure.
So we can set a public hearing, and then that ordinance will get published. So people can see it, and then they can show up for the public hearing that on the posted day.
Yep.
We have the public hearing, hear the comments, things like that, and then from there we can decide to make a motion on something like this. Um, I would not be in favor at all of like today with the zoning board doing the three readings in one day.
We can't.
No. I would actually want three separate meetings, so people can come in at each one and voice their, because.
Yeah, the Iowa code says you can't waive on this particular subject, so.
So I guess the first thing we would need to do is, I mean, we can look into it.
And that's kind of what I want, you know, if if you guys are gonna come and say absolutely not, you know, not gonna go down and do all the work on it, so. But you guys open, you tell me what you want, we can go back, I can get that information sent out to you, and then we can.
We're basically asking permission, I think, to. Put the work into looking into it, because.
We need to do that. I mean, obviously, it's coming coming to head here somewhere, whether it comes at the state level or a local level, but it's uh. We need the service.
If you're looking for the state to fund it, I probably would rather.
Well, I hear you. I I mean, unfunded mandates are all over the nation with us, you know, we get them every, every year, we get something new, but.
You know.
Yeah.
I just, I I look at what the fire departments do, you look at townships. If they don't have a a fire service there, um. I guess we need to look at how this, if we recoup this tax dollars, does this just go in one pocket? Because like the townships, they tax for their. Fire service, they have to provide fire service. A lot of times they'll contract with like Macocota or Bellevue or whatever. To provide fire service, so that township's tax dollars goes to that service, and they are required contractually. To provide fire service. They are the first responders for that township, so I guess when we look at it in that aspect, is that the way this?
It doesn't tell you how you, it says the money comes to the trust in the county, doesn't tell you how you disperse that. So you don't necessarily have to, you know, everything from Bellevue, taxpayer is going to Bellevue.
Yeah.
Everything from Coca is going, so you might have some, you know, obviously Coca is larger, maybe sharing some of that money, because. Well, Baldwin Monmouth, their base is never gonna get them up to that. Life pack thirty five, not cardiac, my that's gonna cost forty thousand dollars for them, so. Um, which I think is good, because then we can help out the smaller services and say, okay.
That that that's just my question, because I look, you know, it's kind of like fire services, they get it, they have a taxable authority, each township, and their. Money usually goes to contract with somebody, so. How would this implement? I don't, I don't, I don't know those, I'm sure Village County can help and all that stuff, but.
I'll try to get the breakdown for you.
Okay.
What people are doing, and uh I have a list here, I didn't update it with this past year's uh bonds, but everyone that um. Approved their bonds, and if they didn't, you know, what was the percentage and stuff that they missed by, so.
Okay.
We can get that.
No, if you're looking for support or our support to move forward, I I guess, yeah, we move forward with. However, the procedure calls for that, we need to look at, look at something before we take, you know, we got sixty days or.
I think we're interested.
Yeah, and and we got a little time again, we we want to shoot for, you know, next fall's.
Why don't you email if you've uploaded that presentation?
I well, I just emailed out the presentation to everybody, no matter where you're here.
I mean, the thing that worries me is when we've gone out to Des Moines, and I've talked to a couple of the counties that have done this, but they've done it for. Totally, I want to say, starting up a service and all of that, you know.
Cedar County did that, right?
Where now they don't have money to maintain it, you know, where, you know, that's one thing where I would like to. You know, if there's a way, you know, I don't want necessarily every little, you know. If you get into the point where it's like, okay, we're doing this now and Springville wants a service and. You know, all these small communities now think, well, I can go buy an ambulance and have a service right here, well, that's. You try to fund something like that, and you ain't gonna have, you're gonna have a worse.
Right.
Show than what we have right now.
And and the advisory council would have more control, they they control the money, so. Yes.
So that would be, you know, one thing that I would really want to stress to that, that we don't want to be having. Trying to fund full ambulances for, and not saying that small communities aren't important, but it's as far as use of money for.
Sure.
Getting help to every community, you know, that's kind of a.
And you and you set the range from fourteen cents to seventy five cents, I want to see where that money. What, this is what we need, this is what it's gonna be used for.
Yeah, and that's.
Everybody's wants and needs are a little different.
They are, and we have generalized needs, right, from people. I don't have. This is what an ambulance costs, this is what equipment costs. That's more so when, if if you guys will pass your three readings, we establish a council. That council would get those nitty gritty numbers and say, this is a cents per thousand that we want to.
What happens to the council if the vote fails?
Dissolves. So if you, i- if the vote, that the bond vote fails, this whole process starts over again. You guys gotta do a three readings, declare EMS essential services again.
Yeah.
And then we go.
Well, you see, that would be kind of the verbiage, I talked about verbiage, because once we pass an ordinance, it's an ordinance. We have to do three readings. To rescind it. It's a resol- it's just a resolution, okay. And I'm assuming it hasn't.
Very clear.
So that's just one reading.
It says three, in the code, it said, when I was reading, it says three, so.
So what he's referencing is Iowa Code Chapter four twenty two D.
Yeah.
And um it says to be effective, the resolution declaring emergency medical services to be an essential service shall be considered and voted on for approval. At two meetings of the board prior to the meeting, in which the resolution is to be finally approved by the majority of the board. There is, it's very clear.
It is, yeah, it 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 spells it out exactly.
Yes, it's a resolution.
Okay.
Because in that resolution, I mean, there's just.
We'll we'll look into it and see, you know.
You guys know.
We'll we'll look, we'll look into it. You you get, get the verbiage and all that stuff, and we can go from there, um.
Good conversation.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate you guys going on a little bit coming up too. We have uh winter EMT's EMR classes starting. I got ten EMT students. Which is good, I got six EMR students, so we're able to hold a class, so hopefully sixteen new providers here in the county once we. I, you know, get through these winter months here, um, we did our uh.
I have a question on that, Stormy.
Yeah.
Is that uh um offered to the like high school students too, is that correct?
They are, typically, we don't get a lot, because um. Activities like.
Yeah.
The night classes, so there's more.
You know, but I'm just.
I I do have, I do have a.
One or two is uh something.
I do have a homeschool um individual for those who are in the area, that's taking a seventeen year old, but I have arranged from seventeen to. Sixty eight in my class. So, um, yeah, try to teach.
Too late, I can go back.
Try teaching that again. Uh, we did our self-assessment, so every year for our region five grant, we gotta do a self-assessment, um where we are with those uh system standards, you know. Are we working towards them? Are we uh not doing, a lot of it is broken down that. Each individual service does, we don't really do it at the county level, because I can't, you know, control what each service does. And it's fine, that's basically a self-assessment. It's, we can say we're not doing anything on there, and it's not gonna harm us at all. Um, but it's a good tool to keep us on track, and they are looking at re-establishing whatever council or advisory committee. Um, but it's a good tool to keep us on track and they are looking at reestablishing whatever council or advisory committee. And retweaking some of those system standards at the state level this year, so. Um, there'll also be push, looking to push through a new scope of practice this year at the state level too, so there'd be some changes coming down with. With EMS going forward, but. Yep, and then we'll um Preston, we talked about them going to a paramedic level service, we're working on pharmacy agreements with. The hospital for them to get their medications.
Did you get any further with that, Kyle?
With the hospital?
Pharmacy agreements?
Oh.
It.
No, I don't.
So is that legal now? Um, so there was some pushback on the lower level. And the upper level management came in and said, let's figure out a way to get it done.
Good.
And so it is gonna be a combination of the pharmacy and Dr. Bobby. Oh, the Medicaid, but it's gonna work. We we got a system, it's the the paper, like I said, paper is going to legal to review, um and. Hopefully by, our our goal was always the end of the year, um but the, the state has to come in and do inspections, so. I don't know how that works around the holidays, but. Relatively soon, Preston will be a a paramedic level service conditional, right? So if they have a paramedic, they run it, they won't have EMT, they run as EMT. That's how W operates. Um, Macocota ha- first rig out has to be a paramedic, but after that, it can be EMT levels, so. Really advancing um our care options in the county, so.
That's good.
Really beneficial. And hopefully these numbers with classes, you know, continue to help out our numbers. Um, we try to do a yearly council here at the end of the year, I'll go back to my services and say, hey, this is what you sent me for your. Your members' numbers, certifications last year, what do you have this year? And then we can kind of see where, if if we're fluctuating. And then we can, you know, hassle those retirees to get them back in the fold, um. Then it's like, yeah, whatever, you can hassle, you can say what you want, right? But. Nope, we're doing good, um thanks for listening, have a good Thanksgiving here.
Yeah. What you're doing and yeah, have a holiday.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks for the info, guys.
Well. I don't see Andrew here. Becky here, so. Jaden around. We just talk fast.
Morning, morning.
You got good news for us?
Yes, indeed.
I, yeah.
Well, I'll get to what I handed out here in a second, uh first thing on the agenda, first things on the agenda are. Handful of infant permits, uh first one being. Uh for Kim and Joyce Richardson on one hundred and forty second street is a field entrance. Uh meets sight distance. Culver's stated in there, so straightforward, so our department recommends approval on this one.
I'll sign that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the field entrance for Richardson on one hundred and forty second street, Farmers Creek Township. Section twenty three. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Most who cares?
Uh, second one is for Stan Kuz, this is also a field entrance on three hundred and twentieth street. Uh Prairie Springs Township, section twenty seven, uh meets sight distance, doesn't require Culver, so our department recommends approval.
I make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve a field entrance for Kuz on three twenty, or three twentieth street Prairie Springs Township, section twenty seven. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Most who cares?
Uh, the third one is for D and T Homes, it is on fiftieth avenue in the Monmouth Township, the section three. Um, this is just a second entrance to their residence. Uh, this entrance meets sight distance and this one also does not require Culver due to high point of the ditch. So our department recommends approval on this.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve a residential entrance to D and T Homes on fiftieth avenue. Monmouth Township, section three, any other discussion?
I do have a question, you know, we talked about this in the past, about having X amount of entrances in a certain area.
Mm-hmm.
Is, I mean, that means in part, that's in that's what.
So we never, what was discussed was, we want, initially, we wanted to limit like how many drivings they could have, but it was decided at that time not to. Do that, but um we generally have a rule of thumb, we try to keep entrances so far apart from each other, like where you don't. We try to keep a minimum, I think, of entrances like seventy five feet apart and then we try to keep them about a hundred and fifty feet away from an intersection or side or like. Intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, last one.
Any other discussion?
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Most who carries?
Uh, last entrant permit is for Tim Current, it's on hundred and thirteenth avenue in Otter Creek Township, section nineteen. Um, this one has sufficient sight distance as you're approaching from the south, uh from the north, given, it says a hundred head. Sight distance from the north is a hundred eighty feet, but that is coming from the intersection of W Cascade Road and hundred thirteenth. That goes to Leisure Lake, so um you know, we're going fifty five as they're making that corner, so the hundred eighty feet um is sufficient. So that one does require a two. Um, that's listed on there, so with all that, our department recommends approval on this.
Make motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve a residential entrance for current on one thirteenth avenue, Otter Creek Township, section nineteen. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Most who carries?
Uh, so what I handed out to you, to you all is the bid tabs. From the DOT bid letting, that was last week, uh the first one on there is what we call pair ninety six, otherwise known as our Channelworth Bridge Project. Um, we had three bids on there, our estimate was two point seven million. Um, and as you can see, the bids came in really well in our favor.
Take two and just move the second one's out there a little bit.
They're working on that second one. Um, but it was very competitive, uh and. Again, so this is the bridge that we got two million dollars from the DOT, so with the lower bid being two point one seven million. Uh, most of the DOT grant will pay for that bridge, or most of the bridge, so that's a very positive thing. Uh. So with that one, there's a resolution to award this project to low responsive bidder of Taylor Construction. Uh. In the amount of.
Excuse me, it's a resolution number eleven fifty two dash eleven dash twenty five dash twenty twenty five.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution number as presented with the bid going to Taylor Construction as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve resolution eleven fifty two dash eleven dash twenty five dash twenty twenty five. And award the bid to Taylor Construction in the amount of two point one seven million dollars for the Channelworth Bridge. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Most who carries?
Uh, the next. Then we had was for our Bernard Road Concrete Overlay, uh it's on the second sheet.
And this is from E seventeen.
Yep, from E seventeen.
Sort of to downtown bridge.
Correct, yeah. So, and our was like two point five million, um it was very, or having good turnout as far as bidders, um. You know, with, when we have asphalt projects, we typically only get two bidders, um with this being concrete, there's a lot more contractors, there's no. Better bidding environment, uh but from there, I think there was seven bidders, six for sure, maybe seven, uh. But the lowest one being Boomerang Construction, uh had like two point two million, so. Uh, again, very favorable considering what our estimate was at, so. Uh, this also has a resolution, at least has the number, but to award to the low responsive bidder of Boomerang Construction.
I'm not familiar with them.
They're out of Cedar Rapids, aren't they?
Uh, animals, yeah, so I think they're based, like, what used to be the old J and P Cycles shop there or museum. Uh, so they.
I've done quite a bit around here.
I think they, they, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they did the airport here recently this summer for City of Okita, or whoever's project that was. Um. But, yeah, good turnout, uh we've never worked with them before, guess what that means, that we haven't worked with, I think, any of. Those contractors that bid, just cause it's concrete overlay and we've never done one. I'm looking forward to it.
There we go.
Uh, so this project does not have a grant, well, it does, we have H zip money, we rewarded uh three hundred thousand.
Is that for the rumble strips and?
Yep, for the pavement, pavement shoulders, rumble strips, the wider paving markings, almost ident- or basically same thing we did for the Z thirty four overlay.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, this, thank you, this one does have DOT uh grant money.
Do you want the exact total or did you?
Yeah.
Two million, two hundred and forty six thousand, two hundred and fifty one dollars.
I didn't know if you wanted us to state that, or you just putting it in the minutes?
I do put it in the minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve. Resolution eleven fifty three.
Correct.
Dash eleven dash twenty five dash twenty twenty five.
Correct.
I would say.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve resolution eleven fifty three dash eleven dash twenty five dash twenty twenty five. And approving a bid to Boomerang Corporation for two point two million and change for the concrete overlay. Of the bottom half of the, I brought. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Most who carries?
Uh, with the upcoming forecast.
We've been, one, I did have somebody question on Channelworth. Now that we've approved the bid, when would construction begin?
That I don't know, so I can't, until everything is fully approved, like by, after today's meeting, I have to go and transition the contract and all, once the contractor signs that. Then there will start to be discussions with the contractor, we are not allowed to actually have any discussions with them until everything's approved.
Okay.
So.
Cause they were just like, are they just gonna, is it gonna be closed all winter, is that, and I was like, I don't know. Um, so that was a question somebody posed to me, so.
Do have that option for free winter work to do construction throughout the winter, um and not be charged working days. Which, cause in the event, say, you get a bunch of snow this winter and in the spring when all falls and floodwaters rise, um if they. I guess each contractor is a different schedule, but if they were to start worth this winter. The thought behind it would be ideally then in the spring when floodwaters do rise, it does not delay construction. Um, they wouldn't be charged working days if it's floodwaters, but can continue with progress, but. Uh, till everything's finally, are fully executed and signed, uh don't know what their schedule would be. I'm hoping though, this winter, to be honest.
With that being, their concern was, if they just automatically start tearing down Channelworth and Morehead Bridge isn't open yet. You know, do we have a, have we, have we heard kinda, they were supposed to start a couple of weeks ago, or?
So, uh Dan is finishing up our day labors as we speak and then plan is to move to. Morehead to do that, so whether, might not be this weekend more of the holidays and trying to finish twenty fourth street bridge, but soon thereafter.
Okay.
And trying to get ahold of a consultant to do what they call non-destructive testing, so once that repair is made. They have to do some non-destructive testing on the truss of Morehead Bridge to determine that the rest of it is sound, is the best way to. Put it, um so trying to get ahold of the consultant to do that, cause we've been. I've been trying to have correspondence, but it's been not very successful, but we need to have that, ideally to have that done during the repair, so that way we. This consultant can utilize the contractor's equipment as far as reaching the truss and under, do all that stuff, so. Uh, still, I guess this is a completely unknown fix to me, I guess this is all new, so. Uh, just kind of rolling with the punches, I guess.
Good.
Um, but that is the plan, will, depending on the contractor's schedule, if they, whenever Channelworth is start, there. The plan is to have Morehead open, but stay tuned.
Okay.
Not a guarantee.
Yeah, which is unfortunate, but we're doing what we can.
Uh, that was just their concern is with Morehead closed.
Mm-hmm.
They can win and try to.
Easier for plowing snow.
Right, so their concern was what happens if Channelworth starts going down too? They won't just close it, tear the guardrails off and let it set all winter type of thing, you know, so. Any other questions for Jaden?
Uh, just wanted to let anybody who's listening online know that with the upcoming forecast, who knows how much snow we're gonna give, but. Uh, we do, just wanna remind people that we do have a snow and ice ordinance, uh we're not out twenty four seven, all hours of the day. Um, and when we are out, it, we can't get all the roads at once, it takes time, so just be patient, uh our guys. Full department, they do what they can and I'm very appreciative of that, but um it's, just want everybody to be aware of that, cause there has been some calls already. Uh, and so we haven't even had snowfall, yeah, so.
Right, yeah.
If you have other questions, thanks, Jaden.
Yep, thank you, have a good holiday.
Thank you. What do we call the brief recess? We'll go ahead and reconvene at this time, we appreciate the break. Next up, we have uh. A couple of things we got, we'll start with Andrew Long. You have the floor, sir, welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, uh doing this in conjunction with Becky here too, um looking to. Increase our staffing within the jail, uh so you've kind of had that discussion previously. Ultimately, what we are requesting is an amendment of four additional full-time personnel. The elimination of part-time personnel and cutting PRN positions down to four from the current twelve that it is at. Um, with that, we currently, and looking at our staffing, that would retain all of our current staffing. It would also, with that extra fourth PRN position, allow us to hire one more female in a PRN capacity. Reason I specify female is, as we go towards looking at more full-time personnel, the goal obviously being to. Limit and significantly burn back on the amount of overtime we're expending. Um, the major factor we have is female coverage there, so as we talk that fourth PRN position that we talked to retain would be. Hire the female to reduce some of that overtime. Um, so that's kind of what we're kind of looking at in terms of staffing numbers for additional full-time, subtract two part-time. And subtract eight PRN. Uh, we're also looking to eliminate the ship lead positions that we have. Um, the current receive seventy five cents stipend per hour and going to a ranked sergeant position. Um, this position would be through a testing process, an interview process. Uh, so it would not just be a direct, we'd move our current ship leads in, we would do this through a testing process. Um, with this, we're looking to gain more structure and having a good promotional structure in place with that too. Um, for legitimacy and uh looking towards completing a good, good formal structure. Um, I think Becky has some numbers and stuff that can help with that.
So Becky, in your email, if I understood right.
Yeah.
The four full-time positions with getting rid of the two part-time.
Yeah.
Creating the four, that would fall within the parameters of the budget.
So.
But. It wouldn't leave for any kind of PRN kind of covers that way.
So when we met in a work session format and kind of discussed these numbers, that was three fifth Friday, four full payrolls ago. And the goal at that time was to stabilize our payroll numbers by implementing full-time people. So because we haven't, we're not there yet, the amount of flexibility in the schedule and the required overtime, we just recently had a holiday, we have a couple of people off on medical leave. There's so many variables within that, we will not be able to accomplish that within what is what I would consider the current budget. And when I say current budget, I mean the part-time PRN salary line and the full timeline, so we know what your salary is gonna be, so I was just working with those numbers. And trying to incorporate these positions within that, we know currently we are outside of that. Some of the things that we consider though is stabilizing it, makes a big difference when you have people slaughtered in those, we currently staff three minimum per ship. We know based on staff study that four is the magical number, we're not going to get there right now, someday that would be nice, but. With consideration of the need right now and the amount we do have to work with, we think that's a start. Um, so our old facility housed eleven inmates max, we averaged eight. We can now house fifty, we average thirty eight point eight three consistently since we've opened.
Well, we're full at forty.
Full, yeah, so which has brought in revenue of over three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars since they's opened, so we know there's gonna be operational adjustments that need to happen. We've looked at their utilities and their food and some of those other things are gonna need to be discussed, so within budget. I mean, I'm going to assume, yes, but there's other things that are decre- depleting their pot of money because of the increased capacity. At some point, the revenue has to be amended to offset some of those things, so I guess that's not a direct answer, with their salary lines, no, we are not there anymore. So I guess that's not a direct answer. Within salary lines, no, we are not there anymore.
Do we have a idea, let's say we just do exactly what you're asking, do we have an idea of? And I get, you can't really forecast overtime because it, bringing these full-time people on, that's gonna just check, schedule, hopefully that will dramatically reduce.
Yeah.
The overtime and all that kind of stuff, we don't know, but do we have a ballpark or just kind of a best estimation on where we might sit? Um.
I mean, considering we just had a holiday and we pay our, we have, we staff, we staff three precisely, that's twelve hours per person that is paid at an overtime rate. We have seven more of those within this fiscal year. This could easily be a fifty thousand dollar swing somewhere. Um, we talked about different schedule options, like one of the full-time potentials, we're working eighty-hour shift instead of the eighty-four to get us through. Staffing at the heightened times instead of falling into a rotation, all of those things.
Uh, if we, if, let's say we approve this, Andrew, how fast could you get them filled? Or what, what do you, what timeframe are you looking at?
We would be looking to by December seventh, have the full-time positions filled. Um, with the time sensitivity to this. Um, ideally sergeants, um, you know, preferably we want sergeants to come first, it, it, to help create structure. It seems like the fiscal need right now is more so the full-time staffing, but we would look to hopefully have that in place by December seventh. Um, with sergeants, um, again, we wanna be very uh selective in how we do this, having a good promotional process. We would hope that looks like sometime into uh, end of January, early February.
Good.
Those kind of timelines.
Oh, you think you have the personnel available to promote and to fill them positions and then, uh, yeah, I, I can't, honestly, I can't perceive or imagine trying to. Fill these position or fill these time slots with a PRN and just call them and say, hey, be here. You know, well, I'm busy, I, I'm doing something.
They've been very, very flexible because we have used.
You know, I think stabilizing is the big answer, number, the word, if that's what you're looking for, is to stabilize the position. I mean, you're basically using tit for tat here.
Yeah.
Uh.
It's just costing us more because they hit the overtime.
We, we did, and my second thought on that was we can use some of that revenue that we're generating, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is what we're.
It's not currently amended.
It's not an experiment, but it's kind of an experiment. I mean, we're adjusting with the flow here with the times and what's going on. I mean, appreciate you keeping the house full, if that's, you know, the right word.
Well, so Andrew, I guess to interject there, so when you're saying by December, whatever.
We pick the start of the next paper, whatever, full time.
I'm guessing you're gonna, you're hoping that our PRNs are part-times, part-timers are gonna take these full-time positions. What you're saying by December seventh, like they're ready, they're hitting the floor, working, we're not training and doing.
Yep, so our existing employees that are there are experienced, they know what they're doing, to where they're working shifts already. So this is simply just amending when they would work and their status.
Right.
So it would be hitting the floor at that point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we don't have to send them off to jail school yet and do all these other things.
I just know over the last year, we've, we verbally commended them on everything they've been doing during this time. It's been very trying, it's been, been very demanding. And the way I, to me, the best way we can show our appreciation is try to help stabilize things over there. And take a little bit of pressure off, so they can actually sit back and catch a sigh of relief a little bit instead of just being overwhelmed. And to me, stability in a, in a, in a workplace is, is priceless. And so that's one of the reasons we asked for this, is kind of look at this, see what we can do, cause we knew, once we get up and running, we're running full capacity, we're gonna need to make adjustments. And if we, can we do it relatively within the, the parameters of the existing budget, we kind of foolish not to, and we can look at it just like the food costs or whatever. The problem is that eats into the, the money we're trying to stockpile for, you know, capital improvement or whatever, but again, we're growing into a new facility and we need to accommodate accordingly, so.
And I'd like to speak to the, the financial part of that too a little bit, sorry, apologize for my voice, but Becky, you correct me if I'm wrong. So our PRNs after forty hours, then we have to pay them overtime after that.
Right.
So our PRNs are basically working full-time hours, so we're paying them overtime for forty-plus hours after that. They're the ones filling those voids right now. Part of the reason we don't have the money left in the budget to do this within budget is because we probably didn't do it soon enough. Because those PRNs are making that overtime and depleting that line item. If we'd have just jumped and did this sooner, we'd probably be in better shape.
Right.
Um, yes, there's still a cost to those four full-time employees, but you're not paying all that overtime past forty hours to PRNs.
And looking at next year's budget, then we shouldn't see a huge increase in that because we're filling it.
So I actually did a quick number of that, just assuming an average three percent in foods on our, so we're requesting the fifteen full-time right now, so that's the number going into next budget year. A straight, they were twenty-one eighty-four hours a year, a straight budget amount for those four, fifteen would be eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. This year, between our part-time and our full-time line item, we budgeted eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, forty-four dollars. So now that does not include the other thing, we have to budget for overtime, the holidays, pay time off and stuff like that, but that's a twenty-six, as far as sustaining this going forward, it's not massive amounts of. An increase to the budget.
Right.
This year, we budgeted an equivalent of fifteen point three three full-time people. We only have eleven full-time and we've used the rest in the part-time line, that two hundred thousand dollars for all of these other.
Yeah, I, I mean, when you break it down, we broke it down four or five times, right? And we have discussions, we had work sessions, but again, it's almost tit for tat. And like Don says, we, I mean, we have a fifty-fifty and I'm not so sure that we even, even considered the other fifty yet, but you know, of that revenue. Because we're still, we still have funds available for the maintenance, the upkeep, the, the food, whatever you wanna call it, you know. Um, and, and, and personnel, you know, so.
My only other concern, and I discussed this with Becky a couple of times a little bit, is the. Eliminating the ship lead and going to sergeant, I don't care what you call that, that's. Within your department, to me, it's kind of all the same, same type of thing, but my concern is that pay going to the. One seventy-seven or whatever you guys came up with for that figure, I don't wanna be quoted for sure, but I, but I thought that's what it was. Is, you know, we have other departments within the county that have. The different rankings and, you know, they're not at that. I also maybe don't like to see that as a percentage because as time goes on. That percentage gets bigger and bigger and bigger. I would rather see it as like a dollar. If you're a ship, ship lead or sergeant, it's a dollar for them extra duties, because you're still doing the jailer duties. You know, but it's also helping out on your end with education and paperwork and stuff like that. So I see the, the increase in something for doing some extra duties.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't like the percentage because that percentage one grows and I don't like to see it so much different than other areas within the county because. Then that's just a snowball effect. Then they're gonna come and want two dollars or three dollars and then your people are gonna come back and want five dollars, you know.
Sure. So I looked at that quickly after we chatted, man. So our top jailer right now, um, who has been here five years makes twenty-five, twenty-three. We were going to propose the shards, the sergeants make twenty-seven dollars an hour, which is seven percent above the top lead. The only other department right now that has a lead paid, their starting wage is twenty-eight thirty-six an hour and our jailers start at twenty-two sixteen. So I guess when in relation to what the stifling amount is above that, their wages are much higher in consideration of where we're at and where our sar-. Like our sergeant would make twenty-seven, they start at twenty-eight thirty-six and top hour thirty.
I guess one way maybe we bridge, bridge that gap would be instead of doing the seven percent percentage, we call it a buck seventy-five. It's just sergeant gets a buck seventy-five over.
And what we did with like the sheriff sergeant is that it's a, it's a pay grade, so that if it's twenty-seven or whatever it is, that number's established in every year. The colic gets added onto that, so the disparity, that continues just to grow with the, with the, above the, seven percent above the.
Great. But see, that's not a percent grows.
Based on their current, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it gets larger. I just, I would rather.
But the seven percentage is actually below the industry standard. Normally it's ten percent for a sergeant.
That's like the city of Macoona is ten percent, um, same with dispatch supervisor being ten percent. So, and, and part of why we do that too is. As we look at the sergeants, those are the ones that we're turning around and we're saying, these are the people that are leading this department. With that, their skills grow as should that percentage as they continue to grow. So saying a dollar seventy-five still limits it more down to a dollar seventy-five more than the, you know, newest person working here. Um, over time, as they grow in their uh, abilities, that should grow to match as well.
Well, and not to attack any other department, I don't wanna get into that. But there's shift leads for other departments where they have a take-home vehicle and the county gas, so that amounts to a heck of a lot more than seventy-five cents an hour. Um, you know, when you take those things into consideration, so. I mean, I don't really feel we're asking for unfair here. I mean, they could go work for another jail as a day-one employee and make more money than they are as a sergeant here. I hate to say that, but.
And there's a lot to, you know, and I'm not trying to downgrade it by any means, Brent, you know.
Yeah.
Type of deal, but I'm just trying to keep. The county as a whole, because we all know that, one, it's public record and everybody talks, so I'm just trying to keep the county as a whole and I wrote, you know. Do the buck seventy-five, that's more swallowable to me than the percentage though, because as time goes on, that percentage, you know, pretty soon we're at. Two dollars and then we're at three dollars, you know.
Ship leads right now get a buck.
Seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents.
So I mean, right there, that's, you know, over double what they're making.
Well, I guess I would right now, looking for the, the sergeants, I'd be in favor of the buck seventy-five. Understanding full well that the cost of living, every, usually that comes, everybody gets that anyway, so. That, and we can, we can look at this and grow, cause again, it's all wrestling with numbers. We don't quite know how this is gonna affect, eh, you know, we, we, we do this, we can always revisit it, we can look at it in the future and kind of see how the. The snow globe settles out a little bit, you know, cause again, um, we're trying to help.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
You can't have the cake and eat it too and have the bakery and all that stuff on the first attempt, let's, you know, we're baby stepping here.
Sure.
This is a big ba-, this is a big step, you know, a year ago, you were arguing for one more person, we're looking at four. You know, so that's where we, you hope you, you see, we're trying to work with you.
Absolutely.
But. We'll get there, you know, and we'll see, uh, to me, that's the way I, I kind of see it.
Again, we're, you, you know, just so we don't overstate what we're doing here from one to four, we're also eliminating eight PRNs in this process.
And two part-time.
And two part-time, so again, you're not just adding four, three, four people, you're, we're, we're trading off.
It's better organization as you today.
And the dollar seventy-five, if I get this right, if I'm following that all right, you were, you were basing that sergeant position based on. A percentage of.
A percentage above the highest correctional officer. Um, for comparison, the city of Macoona, their sergeant is paid ten percent higher than their highest paid officer.
Okay. Okay, so not based on the administrator's salary.
Correct.
Like a first, second deputy, da, 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 and other departments like that.
Right, it's above the highest paid.
Okay, well, that makes sense. I guess, why, and I can't say that, that, you know, a dollar seventy-five above that makes much difference than running with a. Seven percent higher. I, I understand that everything increases, but why wouldn't the, the ratio be that way too?
Well, and I guess just to, just to put this into perspective, so our, our leads right now don't all make the same rate of pay. So if the leads are the sergeants, which they may or may not be, or some, I don't know, they would not make the same pay as a sergeant if we just added a dollar seventy-five to it.
Yeah, seven percent is the way to go. I mean, to Don's comment, we're trying to do our part too. We're bringing three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of revenue into the county with the jail. Um, I mean.
I, I, I can't see any more revenue in than anybody. I mean, we are taking on a lion's share load to do, to be proactive and do what's best for the county.
And I don't know, I guess I just hope, I wish you guys would see that, um.
Well, we do see that, Brent, but there's other departments that do that too. I mean, we have conservation that brings revenue in, we have secondary roads that have got over five million dollars worth of, uh, free money. You know, I mean, that's a, that's a big number.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're all, we're all working together here and, and, you know, and I understand that part of it, and the percentage, I can't see. Ten cents difference between a seven percent and a dollar seventy-five, to be honest, I, I.
Well, it's, it's not in the short term, it's more in the long term and you know that it doesn't get given back, you know, type of thing. So once that gets up to being a two fifty or a three dollar.
Yeah, but that, does that progress any different than what we doing when we do our budget every year? I mean, we, we, we never went to the dollar and a quarter an hour, we went to three percent.
Right, but that was also talked about.
Hundred thousand is different than three.
That was also talked during our budget though, on do you look at that versus, you know, so.
What I, what I would say to it in terms of law enforcement corrections, that percentage and that pay wage, that pay scale. Is typically the way that something like this is done, is through an established pay rate, um, much like Becky was talking, that being that percentage. As opposed to a stipend, um, I think in Becky's world too, it's easier to manage a pay rate versus a stipend, I'd let you.
Oh, definitely. And I guess, I guess the thing about it is, like I said, like the dollar seventy-five on, you know, one of our corrections officers makes twenty-two sixteen, one makes twenty-five. So we based it off the twenty-five, twenty-three, which are five-year mark right now for what the sergeant pay would be. So regardless of what that number is, if it's a dollar seventy-five or whatever, it would be beneficial to have a wage class of sergeant and that's the rate of pay they get.
So this will create a wage class of sergeant, which is.
Then it would, then, then it would increase.
But then you're talking, you could be increasing your overall budget by quite a bit if somebody's getting a three-dollar pay raise plus the seven percent.
But. But everybody's getting.
No, the seven percent.
Yes, because right there, what Becky said, one was making twenty-two, one.
If somebody.
The, the ship lead right now is making twenty-two something and one is making twenty-five, well, that one that's making twenty-two is getting a three-dollar pay raise, cause he's gonna go up to. Seven percent above that, yeah, up to that twenty-seven, so he's getting up four dollars.
But this was, this is itself was substantiate that, right? I mean, that's your. Well, if what you were making here, if you got promoted to this position, then that's a substantiate your duties.
Okay, but that's also gonna change our budget a lot, giving people four-dollar, five-dollar pay raises.
Which, and I based it off of the numbers that we looked at was based off four people making.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven dollars an hour, so it doesn't matter who they are. So we don't currently have a ship lead making twenty-two sixteen, but that is our base scale right now. So they are twenty-two sixteen to twenty-five, twenty-three is what they are, but we base numbers off of four of them making twenty-seven dollars an hour.
Ultimately, in, in my mind, what this is, is it's an investment in our people to retain, um, what we're looking at as being our, our best talent. Um, we can go Clinton County, for example, they will give you credit for previous experience in their pay scale. We could have somebody that's ever worked in Clinton County in their life, has five years' experience there, go there and get paid as someone that's been there for five years. We have Dubuque County that's starting COs at thirty-some dollars an hour, Scott County's the same way. Johnson County, I saw they're hiring seventy-seven to eighty-three thousand a year. So I mean, you got the prison in Anamosa, you've got the prison at Thompson, we have so much surrounding us. That what this is, is it's an investment, what we're considering would be our top talent as our sergeants. And retaining those people that could go, not have the responsibilities of being a sergeant, make more money. So it's, it's an investment in the retention of.
Hey, and I really agree. When I hear reports of some of the incidents and, and we're working for, starting for twenty-two bucks an hour, I'm sorry.
I'm just real quick, I'd tell, we had, over the weekend, one of our, our ship leads had to tackle a gal that was trying to climb over the stairs to jump off and kill herself.
So getting paid, be in charge and make, be responsible, make those decisions and don't, what do we, what do we do, what do we do? Do, act, prevent that liability to the county.
Um, what, what, what is our?
Right now, we can take a motion to approve this stuff.
What is it? Yeah, what, we, yeah, approve, what am I approving?
Well, I guess, just for sake of discussion, I would ask for a motion to increase the full-time correction officer count by four to fifteen full-time. Eliminating two part-time positions and reducing twelve PRN positions to four effective December seventh, twenty twenty-five. That would be one.
I would make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to do what Becky said. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Copy.
Both.
Got it.
Does he, you got that?
I'll second you too. So the second motion then we would ask for, eliminating the ship lead position and restructuring to the rank of sergeant at a pay grade of twenty-seven dollars per hour. That would be effective after the promotional process at a date which would be determined by the sheriff.
I would make that motion with a note that we have had excessive work sessions on this and we discussed the numbers and, and dissected them. I would make that motion with a note that we have had excessive work sessions on this, and we discussed the numbers and, and dissected them, so. I appreciate the time that you put in.
Is that at the seven percent over the highest?
That is what the twenty-seven equates to.
Okay.
Which we are going into the budget year, so this might be. Um, of, you know, maybe if it, if you look at the numbers until I first, maybe it gets restructured then, but to get it in place, that was. That's the best we could throw in for a motion.
I guess I'll step out of the chair, or vacate the chair, no second then? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Close? Close and carries.
Thank you, we certainly appreciate it, I mean, I know the staff appreciate it, they are very, very dedicated people and. I mean, I commend our PRNs, and I think they're worth being rewarded that they do, they have. They have really, really, really accommodated the need that we've got in the facility, so.
Very much, they're what's keeping us.
I'm sure some of them are there just because they like a little part-time job, a little extra money, but some of them are there. Cause they think they're open that it can turn into a full-time.
And that says a lot if they're willing to do that, that says a lot if they're willing to.
Cool, and again, this all boils down to keep us informed with the budgets as we get going forward, and we look to the end and we can make sure we cover. Cause we're gonna have to do that with food and a budget amendment, so if we need to accommodate a little more to cover the staffing shortfall, we can do that as well with that.
And I do think we will, it just kinda depends on holidays, and like I said, we've got a couple, a couple of people off right now, you're doubling down on salaries, we're paying them off. You just can't control some of those things, but we'll keep an eye on it and like, you know.
Alright.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody.
Becky, you're on hold.
I just have one thing, I thought I had two action items today, but I actually just ended up having one. So we have had a vacancy in our confidential secretary position over at the Penrose Annex since the first part of November. So I reviewed the position with the. Um, so I've reviewed the position with the Veterans Affairs Commission and the Administrator, and we feel that the permanent part-time position is better suited. As more of a flex position, um, working on an average of nineteen hours per week. Um, the commission is very concerned about making sure that, we had a structured part-time, the commission is very concerned about there being flexibility that if. The two full-time had to be in training or out of the office, that this person can flex to make sure the doors are open ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, and we think. Um, that we can accomplish that by making it more of a flex position. Um, we did also discuss the pay grade with this position, um, the prior secretary was accredited through the VA. Um, we don't feel currently that is a need, it was a great benefit to have, but the utilization of it was not there enough to offset the cost associated with that ongoing. Um, so we are going to back off that being a requirement of the position, and it will be purely administrative for the Veterans Affairs and the General Assistance Office over there. So with that being said, I would ask for a motion to approve the confidential secretary job posting at nineteen hours per week average. With a wage range of fifteen dollars to seventeen dollars per hour.
The being certified through the VA. That position normally wasn't that way, it just with the turmoil and the transition that was in the office, it just. Kinda helped through the staffing changes.
At a point, we're, at one point in time where we weren't going to have anybody in the office accredited, so we thought having that back fulfill as an option. But what we learned through this is that even though you had access to the systems, the position actually had the knowledge of using it or act of doing the claims, they just had the base. It was available, it wasn't utilized, that may change going into it. For start right now, because it wasn't utilized, we feel like this is the direction to go, not to say that six months or a year down the road, if our staffing levels change within the other. Two, maybe we would need to revisit that.
Do you feel that that pay scale is in range of what we, what we can accomplish here?
So we feel like this, the responsibility will be scaled back quite a bit. And, yes. Reception administrative.
I would second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Ned to approve the confidential secretary to be post, job posting to be. Approximately nineteen dollar or nineteen hours per week at a pay scale of fifteen to seventeen dollars. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, close and carry.
Thank you.
You have a good holiday.
Thanks, you too.
Next up, we got Elizabeth from the Health Department.
There's no times on the agenda anymore.
Good morning.
Nope, because we didn't like regular gaps and waiting because somebody wasn't scheduled till eleven o'clock.
You're gonna do chores there with them boots on or?
Uh, field work.
No, good. Nice, muddy day to do field work.
I've also been tracking mud through the courthouse accidentally.
I mean, there are people that have changed their shoes when they come out of the, I mean, I, I mean. Crazy talk.
Old, it was old mud.
Well, that just, Jeff, did you hear that? That's where it came from, just saying.
Okay, so we had our Board of Health meeting last Tuesday, and this is just my report from that. Um, so I know that I've kind of brought to you guys the discussion of the county-wide animal control program. Um, so I think after the last time I met with you guys, ECIA reached out to me, Divya Flynn from ECIA. Um, and we had a lot of discussion about, um, some people that reached out to her, and then conversations that we've had. So we decided to put a survey together that we have sent out to our local veterinarians, or we are going to be sending out to our local veterinarians. Um, law enforcement, local municipalities. And I think a few others, just to get feedback to see if this is something that is a need, and if it is, what aspects of that program are, are needed. So I will get back to you soon if I get results from that, hopefully sometime in January. Um, our private well program, so the total allocation for our fiscal year was forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, we've used actually more than half of it now, um, I had a few claims come in, so we are. Um, more than half spent on that. I did ask for a reallocation of twenty thousand dollars, um, from the state, so that would mean that in January, hopefully we would get an additional twenty thousand. Um, so that we wouldn't run out like we would, um, last year.
And what's the possibility of giving?
Um, I would say pretty good, just because we have always spent all of our funds, other counties do not, and that reallocation is basically. You know, counties that aren't using their funds, the counties that are can say, hey, I, I'd like more money. And honestly, there's not been like a set process for this, so I have, in the past, have not asked for it. But I guess you just send the state an email saying, hey, can we have some more?
Well, obviously, the need is there, correct? I mean, analyze.
Yeah, cause we, we use our money every year.
So we're updating and we're improving, so.
Yeah, yeah, we are, and I think I mentioned this that one time before, but we are one of the top three counties in the state, um, reconstruction of wells. So. Uh, let's see. So these numbers are already changed, but, um, when I put the report together, we had. Completed sixty-three, uh, water tests, we had one well closure. Um, we had four well reconstructions completed. And we did a thousand dollars towards our getting machine, um, that we're purchasing. Um, and then we did promotional mugs with QR codes that take people to our website, and then to the DNR, uh, state website that give information on the program. I should have brought one down for each of you, if you want one, stop at my office, and if you wanna re-gift it, you can do that, you know, cause then it's like spreading the awareness. Um, so, next, uh, professional involvement for IOWWA, um, I was, um, I'm, I'm. I guess nominated as a candidate to sit on the Board of Directors for IOWWA, um, they'll be voting for that in January. Um, installer training, so we have our, um, training for our installers this. In the next couple of weeks here in December, on the eleventh and the twelfth, I think. Um, here at the bare grounds, so it's not just limited to our installers, it's also for any. Yeah, septic installers, um, so we might see guys from Dubuque County, Clinton County. Uh, we might see guys from across the state of Iowa coming in.
Do we charge for that?
So IOWWA charges for it. Um, there's a cost for the, um, class, which is a day and a half. And they get twelve CEUs for that, and then there's a cost for the exam if anybody needs to take that. I would say right now, probably about half of our installers are certified already, because we're starting to get guys from out of the county that already have that certification. And we actually had some of our own guys go ahead and get the certification prior to. I will be attending that as well, because I need the credit hours. Uh, and then there's also, also an additional CWATS exam that's held on January sixth in Cedar Rapids, so anybody that can't get to. The class or to take the exam, I'm here, they can go to Cedar Rapids, and they are op- offered a few times a year. Um, and I'll be attending that conference on the, um, seventh and eighth, right after that. Um, for IOWWA. Um, septic and well program activities, so to date that I put this report together, we have seventy-two septic permits issued. And twenty-five well, um, construction permits, and we did pay all of our DNR fees, which we weren't paying. And hadn't been paid since like Frank. And actually, the DNR forgave several years of us not paying, so. We didn't have to pay as much as I was hoping, I think, and we're going to. Army Corps of Engineers, um, I've been asked to assist the Corps with, um, the evaluation of four properties, um. On, I think, is it four, not four, seven value. Um, basically, they might have subject systems on or ground, they want to go in and do the assessment. So once the weather gets better in the spring, I will go out, do the time of transfer inspections on those. Um, and determine if they need to be replaced, or if they need an easement. Uh, time of transfer program. Nobody liked my letters I was sending out, apparently, like, we do a letter, so when there's a time of transfer inspection, that inspection comes directly to my office. I review the inspection, and then I send out a letter to everybody saying, hey, it's working, or it's not, or it needs repairs, or this or that. Um, so I think the letter was confusing to a lot of people, uh, so I put another letter together, and if any of you wanna see copies of that, you can come to my office. Um, but it basically just says little check boxes, so.
Can you just email that to me?
I can, yeah, I can definitely do that, it's just easier for people to read, it's kind of more of like a straightforward answer on what they need.
I think that, I mean, the issue probably was what, how it was stated, or, you know, how, what the age of it is, and. You better consider this, or you, yeah, I mean, it was a little confusing to a buyer, I would say, if you're gonna read that.
Yeah, so we don't pass and fail, we don't pass and fail, um, and the DNR doesn't like us to say pass and fail. Um, is it, you know, there's all these different things, what they don't want us to say, so I've been trying to like, work with them and trying to put this letter together. They don't put a template together for us, so we just have to create our own, every county is different. Um, but I put one together that I like, I think it's pretty cut and dry clear, so, you know, it's. The buyer and the seller's responsibility to read the report that the inspector does and understand what's in that report, don't just rely on the letter. So like, comes on one, they can read it all, and determine what they wanna do. Um, general activity, we're just, it's just busy, busy right now, everybody's trying to, um, get everything in. Last minute septic systems, we got two going in today, which is why I have my boots on.
Port of ground gets hard.
Yes, exactly. Um, it's just high, high call volume, our phones weren't working though, so that, so I wasn't getting any calls. Uh, let's see what else here. Internal policies, I'm just gonna be working on, um, internal policies that we do not have. We don't have any policies, isn't that weird? My department has no policies, so I'm gonna make policies just for general, like, day-to-day stuff that we do, so that. You know.
Good idea.
And then the last part, we're not gonna talk about, okay, cause I think it's. Touchy subjects at the moment, and, um, we'll have to bring that up at a later date.
Good.
Geo permits, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good day, have a good holiday.
Yeah, you too, thank you, Elizabeth.
Lisa, you have the floor.
Just need a motion to approve the minutes of the November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five board proceeding. That's written by Audrey Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Ned, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five board proceedings that's written by Audrey Smith. Authorized publication in the official newspapers, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Close and carries.
That's all that I have for the board today.
One question for you, we're in the end of November. Do we kinda have a te- tentative budget, schedule, timeline?
Just gonna discuss that with you after the meeting.
Okay, okay. Moving on, Ms. Levan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
I think it's still morning, it's been a long morning.
We've got a full head of steam, so we're still going.
Right, alright. Um, a very busy week this week, after today, court will be closed. Um, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, court and state offices will be closed, uh, the entire courthouse will be closed. Um, on Thursday and Friday. We'll reopen again on Monday, December first, and our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December second, at nine AM. And that day, we, um, I have tentatively scheduled a work session with the Barn of Dreams Committee at their request, we have, we had time. To make sure you want that on the agenda.
Okay, my question would be the. Has the, have they talked with the Fair Board, are they on the, are they coming to that, are they invited, because? Part of it is if.
They have talked with the Fair Board as far as. I know the Fair Board is not coming to that.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, with them being the management party of the fairgrounds. Any idea of a new building and where it goes has to go through the Fair, Fair Board kind of thing, so. I don't wanna give them the preconceived notion, they can come here and ask for, they wanna put up a new building. And without it kind of being agreed to and cleared through the Fair Board, because that's kind of the management party. Structure we have set up, so that's where I'm like, I, if they wanna come, great, but, um, I would wanna make sure anything approved is cleared through the Fair Board first.
Okay.
So, that's where I was at, are they coming, or are they talking, or has it been discussed?
I guess I would just let them be aware of it, and they have to decide what's going on there, but, uh, we're getting information, I would think they want information also, so. They, they, their. Board needs to decide what they need to do.
Yeah.
So, they did, just so, they did talk to the Fair Board at our last Fair Board meeting, and. They're very preliminary stages, that, you know, they have a broad scam of what they wanna do, but no. No, a hundred percent, anything's, nothing's a hundred percent.
They're gonna bring their, their plans, what they had.
Everything has to be coordinated through the Fair Board.
And basically, we wouldn't be giving them permission from, from here.
Right, the Fair Board would have to, because.
At this time.
Right, yeah, I can let them know that too.
Okay.
Okay, um, at eleven o'clock on the December second, our new Jackson County Clerk of Court. Will be sworn in to serve when we down, um, in the courtroom, if any of you want to attend that, we've been invited to that. Um, and then whether or not we have, and, and, another work session on the investigator position, where the county attorney has been requested. And I just have the tentative that could be on here, but again, you three have to decide if it's gonna be on the agenda or not, so. Other than that. I think that's all I have, happy Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you much, committee reports.
Yeah, you know, uh, we had municipal meeting, which was, uh, pretty good attendance. Um, again, basically, uh, Ned went over his budget, and I hopefully that you guys all got a copy of that. And have a chance to review some of the numbers and why and what in there. Uh, it was interesting, actually, to see some of those different, um, numbers from drowning counties and. Objectives, uh, Jennifer was there to go over the insurance part of it. Um, she was pretty positive about the upcoming year as far as rates, I mean, overall, even for the counties. Uh, she's pretty positive about that. Uh, she wanted to remind us again that we have like three hundred minutes of attorney time through our insurance policy. If we need assistance from above.
Glad we haven't used it.
We do have some new marriage, uh, you know, of course, so again, we, we welcomed them, they weren't there, um, but, uh. It's, it's, it was interesting, uh, Prosperity Eastern Iowa yesterday was a two-hour. Um, uh, program, several different programs, our eight or nine speakers were there, and they were going over the small business loan program, and. There was a lot of, a lot of interesting options available for these small businesses right now. So you have to get with the people that are really work on this, either somebody from ECIA, or again, over at Daxton County Economic Alliance, uh.
Good to know.
Yeah, so, you in touch, uh, you know, we could get you in the right direction, there is. Yeah, so in touch, uh, you know, we could get you in the right direction. There is locals Dubuque, Macogota that are applied and. Are getting some of these small business. I don't know the whole parameters of it, interest rates and such, but, uh. Again, uh, it was also brought up, uh, about the Cascades industrial park. So they do have, I believe, a data mining facility going in their industrial park. So I asked her to get more information to us about that, so we can kind of review and see where we're headed and. What, what, what that, what the hell the parameters are there.
Better fit than flapping them here and there in the county.
Well, you know, like.
They take their industrial park and generate no property tax revenue once.
Well, yeah, we talked about that. I talked about the revenue generated and, you know, what, 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 what. What's that for me, basically, you know? So I guess it's, it's one of the things. They like to, like to set them close to a substation, of course. And, but I said, we had concerns and that's why we don't, concerns about the usage. So we did limit ourselves to expansion, if you will, if, uh, they come in here and all of a sudden we're out of, we're out of power. We can't. Offer a business to, to come in, you know, so. And, um, again, we had yesterday also was a two-hour board Zoom meeting with the statewide board of directors, ISAC's board of directors. So as you probably know, I am representing the District Six, which is coming up December third, our meeting. And so I am, like I said, representing thirteen different counties, I believe it's thirteen. But my term is up and my term limits are up. I've been doing it long enough to say I have to get out, so if anybody wants to volunteer and jump in to. Take that position, they'd probably be happy. We usually have too many volunteers, you know how that works.
Yeah.
Uh, again, they went over our legislative, um, priorities. There's, there was a list of top seven and the top one is property tax, uh. Reform, if you will. Uh, water resources was number two. Um, actually, one of the top seven was the nine-one-one, so. Uh, is how it may be structured and how they're taking funds away from our. Local funds, so it'll be interesting. You have to sure it's gonna come up and we'll see what comes out of it, but, yeah. That's enough of that.
You got anything?
My biggest ones, because most of mine report back here, but, um, I had, uh, early childhood yesterday. It was a very interesting meeting, um. Again, they're in that whole realm, like mental health was at one stage of. Going to larger districts and things like that and how that it's gonna affect and. Um, Mary Kay presented that at their. Uh, director's meeting that they showed them some different maps. Which was different than the original map they got shown originally, just like mental health and. Me and Jack both sat there and said. Don't get hooked on the maps because if they do anything like mental health, they'll come up with a totally different map that nobody's ever seen.
Right.
And that'll be the one they're going with. Um, we did have, uh. Mike. Zismar, Zismar.
Zimmer from New West?
Zimmer, yeah, that's it. Was there and. Just kind of listening. He's kind of a. Following this out there and there are some districts that were having some issues with. How things were run and stuff like that. Um, there's a lot of new programs out there for childcare centers like the Daisy two point O and. And things like that. And they're looking at, um. They found there were some gray areas that weren't covered, like. Basically, I, I would classify him under a mandatory reporting type of deal, but more reporting it back to. Um, the board that's all giving you funding, so like we fund, um. Uh, the Family Resource Center. So if they know of a situation where they're receiving funds and there's a. A family that has a domestic violence or whatever, just kind of reporting that they've had. Families that have received from funds from them that are also under investigations. Just to keep everybody in the loop that, of what's going on there. Um, one of the things that was brought forward in our meeting was. Uh, they're looking for people to sit on the district or on the state board for early childhood. So, um, they reached out to ask me if I would consider it or anybody else on the board. So we're kind of talking through that situation on if we would consider that. It was also brought up that we should not just, because there is an Iowa code out there. So that we need to fight this whole district meeting because there's an Iowa code for. Early childhood out there, so that was gonna get sent over to us to review. Um, but not just to roll over and let the state do what they want, that. You know, we're looking at different administration coming forward. Next, after next year and maybe try to drag your feet there and see how that goes. Because if we just roll over, they can push it through, but if we don't, then they can, uh. Have to change some Iowa codes before it can go through. And the biggest reason is, you know, our concern with like Clinton and Jackson County early childhood is. If you get put into the monopoly of. Seven counties, fourteen counties, and then counties have. Big metropolitan areas are your smaller, what I would classify, the rural county is gonna get just kind of lost in the shuffle. Because it's going to be a lot easier for the metropolitan areas to basically gobble up or use up the funds by giving out. You know, the diapers, the car seats. You know, it's easier to reach that in the big cities than it is to have people drive to go and get these things. So that's kind of why we want to stay kind of rural so that we can help.
Keep a voice.
Help keep the people there. And again, the, uh. Preschool scholarships, we are up to fifteen, which is way better than what we started off doing, but we're still. Five to ten people short that we could be funding. But again, the hoops that they're making them jump through now is a little bit more. So if there's people out there that. Qualify, we do urge you to take the initiative to try to jump through the hoops too, so that we can assist you. That was the big stuff with that one.
Good?
I'm good.
Alright, Ryan had a busy week last week. Um, Limestone Bluffs, um, Michelle's kind of getting back online after the, the shutdown kind of. Uh, paused a lot of grant processes and things like that, so she's getting up and running on those and kind of getting back online. Same with, uh, same with the Macoca River Water Management Authority, but not to that extent. Um, we're just finishing up collecting our data, getting the, with our, uh, stream sensors that we put out. Uh, the forty-five different places and we collect our samples three times a year. We're trying to kind of. Compile the data, kind of make some sense out of it and compare it to previous years and stuff, so we're working on that. We're gonna have a presentation on that come up. Probably March, when we get all the different numbers back in together, so that's going. Biggest thing I got is, uh, workforce development. We did the whole combined, combined districts with the South Central. Uh, workforce development district and everything was going great. Um, we approved that agreement that we did and we sent it out. And twenty of the twenty-one counties agreed. And one county said, why does it take a hundred percent in the agreement? Um, we had to be ratified by a hundred percent of all the counties, but in the agreement, once that happened. It only took a two-thirds majority and they didn't like a couple of sentences, so they asked for it to be rewritten. So I have a meeting at one thirty today to approve the new thing that all twenty-one counties have to then reapprove. And so that'll be coming back around, so, um. It's a work, they can't, they get, the joint board can't conduct any business as a new board until all twenty-one. Things are signed and there's time constraints that are coming down the pipe and things and it's, it's, we're getting there. So, uh, JCA met, um, just kind of coming into, you know. Kelly was telling us some of the things and different grants and everything she's been working through the year and stuff, so everything's going pretty good with that. Um. That's it. That's all I got. Any, anything else for the good of the meeting?
Not for me.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I would second.
Got a motion by Ned, second by Mike to, uh, adjourn the meeting. Any other discussion? Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving out there. Drive safe, enjoy the holidays and, uh, we'll see you in December.
Be patient.